I'd like to add one agenda item, and that is the approval of the lease documents and the resolution approving the lease documents for the purchase of the new ambulance. We're leasing that over a five-year period until it requires an isolation. We don't think that the commission's well approved of the lease documents.
I'd like to add to consent. We have a project at the old Portland pump station. We have a contract with Palmer Engineers, and I'd like to have them give a few thousand dollars. We have some easements to acquire, and that's just for them to prepare the documentation and acquire the easements.
The planning and building codes has a request to add an item to the agenda. It's a first reading of an ordinance, the name of property maintenance code. You wrote to Ramona and Rob just before the meeting started. You all asked our department to look at change in property maintenance code due to vacant structures, demolitions of historic properties, and there was a lot of concern from stakeholders and citizens in the Argus Review Board at the time. You passed a moratorium until December 20th of this year. So this is the revision. We've sent it to the Argus Review Board, and the Code Department more of a joint workshop. They were supportive of it. The citizen comments, I've gotten emails and rattled around. I also spent about two hours with the Heritage Council, CLG, and went over it, made a bunch of changes, and the final version was attached to a workshop, and they've lost it. You might always want to support, or we recommend that we get that off here.
You said I would take it more than it?
They've looked at it, as well as the Code Department more, yes, sir. And color version underlined, and red strikeout is divided seen tonight. I don't know what you'll get in the official version, but this is the color version.
I received some correspondence late today from the Franklin County Health Department. Basically, what they're asking, they're asking us to sign a MOU with them since we are 24/7, 365 public safety answering point. Memorandum of understanding, it's kind of like a memorandum of agreement, but a memorandum of understanding. Basically, they just wanted to formalize to where if they need us to do emergency contact for other personnel after hours, that they would provide us with a list of names, contact information. We already have the software in place where we simply put in names, all the phone numbers that they would want for those people, put them in a subgroup, and then we'd make one call. All Franklin County Health Department personnel needed to respond to whatever, for whatever, you know, emergency situation. So basically, what I needed to do was put it on the agenda so that the, basically give them the mayor permission to sign the memorandum. I'll make sure the copies of this are passed out and given to Ramona.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is that right? Thank you.
Gee. We'll be asking permission to add, to hire employees. They did require by the first year permission approved a couple of months ago. Of course, as usual, we'll go through Randy Donahue, and we'll get him to add that when he gets back on vacation. First, want to make you aware that we hired two, if you recall last month, and the additional ones will be in process of announcement. They're all working pretty good, so they'll be on the agenda for permission. Anyone else?
May I?
Yes.
In seven sixteen, what did you say? Seven sixteen personnel with a telecommuter here, one that has resigned. Also put that she may be interested in part-time employment.
Right.
Continue. Would you be willing to get two part-time employees versus one in full-time? Would any other type?
She actually came to us from the, from Sales Police Department, and they have since hired her back. I think they made it, you know, made her a better offer and hired her back, so she's interested in working for us part-time. The problem with that is we have to work that in between when we need her and when she's not over there. So basically, there's like, there's like one and a half shift per week that she might be available to us, so it's not something that we can count on. And, you know, it's, even, even that puts us short, so. All we're doing is trying to fill a vacancy of somebody that didn't work out that we'd hired a couple of months ago that had to resign, so.
Okay.
Okay? We definitely want to use her full-time because she's still going to be certified through the state, and she's going to keep all her experience and everything up with her sales, so she, and she knows our system, so it'd be a great benefit to us, but we can only use her probably about a shift a week is about as good as we'll, about all we'll get there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner. Do you have, yeah? Thank you, Mayor. I guess the first thing I would report is that tomorrow, Commissioner Ralston and I will attend the Franklin Plant Board meeting to discuss the billing of the crash program. And I just want everybody to be aware of that. And then we'll do, go around and do the department bid reports, and you don't find a parish, do you, Cartwright?
Don't have anything for Mike.
Cartwright, have anything? Mr. Mueller?
The city and the county received revised, or proposed revised flood maps, and we're both under the review process. We have 20 days or so to reply. And then today, I got an email from them, they're asking to hold a community meeting on it, joint city and county, for the citizens here at City Hall. So I'll be letting you know about the dates that they want to do that on. But we're reviewing the changes or the proposed maps. The good news is, previously, Fred was aware of this, and I think he told you all, but we were required to have a power agreement provisionally created legally for the north flood system, and we were able to get that, not required, it saved the city a lot of money and a lot of time. So the new proposed maps don't have any conditions of restraining attachments, and they're based on new modeling, and that's, they got the grant in 2008, I believe it was, and the maps are just now being out. Is that all that?
Yeah.
Mr. Hackford? I just want to give you a quick update. The fire apartment roof is under construction. They have to work this weekend. They got the roof torn off and the first layer put back on, so it did not work today, but hopefully they'll, they'll finish that up in good weather within a couple of days, so they'll address all the leaks this winter in the fire department. Wilkinson Trail, that project's under construction. We're waiting on the paving company to come at the end of the year. I think the paving companies get very busy, probably have more on their, on their plate than they can do. As soon as they show up, we'll have that trail paved, and the existing part to the Gaddy behind, we'll have that paved, and they're working on putting the rock down from there to Buffalo Trace as we speak, so. With good weather, we should, we might be able to finish that project this, this fall. And then finally, leaf season, that should end probably in December. A lot most of the leaves are down. We've been through the neighborhoods several times collecting the leaves, and up until Sunday's wind, it probably had a big leaf day today, but with the wind yesterday, it probably, we scattered them around, but that's, that's going well, and it seems like we're getting all the leaves taken out.
I have Tammy Fields representing Human Resources, any report?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Rebecca Hall, any additional? Darrell, any additional?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Mr. Dawson with Finance? Chief Posits, anything to ask?
No, thank you.
And Fred Deaton with Police Department?
As we have a list of surplus property that's on your agenda, and we do want to thank a citizens group, the Franklin Crime Stoppers, which because of citizen involvement helped us to solve a recent robbery at the circle K market on St. Colleen, which is a very valuable program.
Thank you. Mr. Scow, any report?
I do have one thing. I just wanted to make you aware of, the event Cornets and Cannons won the top event award in the state of Kentucky, and we're receiving an award for Friday in Golden Creek.
This concludes our report. Okay, now we're down to whole business.
Let me hear your business, brother. All right, well, that's our business. Commissioner, hit.
I just, I had an email sent to me from John Arnett, who does the tennis here in town. I just want to give some congratulations to our Parks and Rec Department, that because of this group of people, that the USTA Kentucky for 2010 media award, our website won the best in Kentucky. Also, we have the senior league championships that come in. Mark, how 565 players came to Frayford, and it was chosen by USTA the best adult tournament of the year. And also, because of another person, we have the USTA Kentucky and the regional office, one person went down, we now have 90 kids taking tennis lessons twice a week after school in a quick start program this past year. So congratulations to the city of Frankfurt, for holding a great tournament and having great people here to help represent our city. Thank you, Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Okay, that gets us down to discussion items. Can I ask you?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I recognize to Bill Scow, the, 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 the.
Thank you. In fact, I guess it was a summer, Mr. Dawson and I, as we did two years ago, started looking at our, at our finances. We brought Bob Finnich as a more contingent in to take a look again at where we were financially, knowing that we have a scheduled rate increase coming up January 1 of this year. And with that, Bob, you're off.
You know, we can flip through the book, we can scroll through whatever, we like either way, whatever's, whatever's easier. My name is Bob Finnich, and I do work for Morgan Keenan, and my office is in Lexington. I've worked with the, with the city for a number of years, and as Bill said, we've viewed cash flows and rate analysis before, and that's what we've undertaken over the past three, four months. Also note that I live here in Frankfurt, so I have a, you know, a dual entrance, one as a, from a professional standpoint, and as, you know, as a citizen. As we go through this, this will be brief, it's extremely important, but it'll be brief, but just interrupt me if there's a question, or if something's not clear, and we'll stop. If you flip to the first page, you know, what are we going to talk about? And again, as I mentioned, we're going to specifically discuss cash flows, and we're going to discuss rate increases, and whether we need a rate increase today, tomorrow, or two or four years from now. So that's, that's kind of the purpose of the, of the meeting. I also want to talk, touch briefly on the sewer systems, and keep in mind, we're just talking sewer system. Talk briefly on the sewer systems, financial position, and the debt profile. We'll just hit on that just a moment. We want to talk about the rating agencies. You hear a lot about rating agencies in the news these days, so we're going to, we're going to talk a little bit about the effects of the rating agencies on our community. We're going to talk about some of the key ratios, some of the really good things that are going on here, and we're going to end with really some wrap-ups, some conclusion and recommendation. If you flip to the next page, what did we do? And again, we have analyzed cash flows. We've looked at the necessity of rate increases. We've looked at your rate increases, we've looked at your cash position, we've looked at issuing bonds, and we've developed a plan on how to best, you know, roll out your capital plan. Second bullet, you know, review required construction projects and deployment of capital over a 10-year timeframe. I know Bill has reported on that a number of times to the commission, and we'll talk about that on the next slide, too, but there are a significant amount of EPA required projects coming down the pipeline, and we've got to address those. We've either got to address those utilizing cash, or bonds, or both, which again, we'll discuss. You know, review how much rate increase may be necessary and the timing to propose rate increase. Again, I'm kind of repeating myself, but we're making sure it's, it's very clear. Cash first, bond proceeds, we're going to hit on that. And then the last item, you know, how do we balance the capital projects process while minimizing rate increases? And how do we maintain the city's S and P budget? That's very, very clear. You know, first bullet, I think everybody's aware of this, you know, Frankfurt is, is not unique. I mean, these EPA mandates are coming down across the country, but the city has deployed approximately $80 million capital projects in the next 10 years. So I know you're aware of it, Bill and his staff have been working on this, and again, we're, we're developing plans to fund those projects. And this page is really just some points, and, you know, one of the points, by ordinance of two, and I don't know the exact date, I remember, but I don't know the date, it was in '07, the city adopted rate increases. And there was a rate increase that went into place January 1 of '08, it was 12%. We reviewed the rate increase January 1 of '10, and we felt that it could be canceled. And we're going to talk about why it was canceled just briefly, and it really centers around, it's important to have cash, can't have too much cash, and you don't want to put too much of a burden on the, on citizens. The third sub-bullet, that's what we're talking about today. I mean, all the, all the books were, they're scheduled for a rate, a rate increase of 15% January 1, and that's, that's what we're going to talk about. Should also be noted, and I know everyone's aware of this, cost of living increases every year they occur, that's proactive by the city. I work with 100 water systems across the state that should do that. If they don't, it's hard, it's a hard decision to make. You know, we do that here, it's, it keeps us in line with inflation. The next bullet, I've mentioned it probably three times already, but we're going to, you know, we're going to discuss how to mix, deploy a mix of cash and bond proceeds necessary to fund your $80 million in projects over your next 10 years. Another bullet, it's a point, borrowing costs are near historic lows. We issued bonds in, it was just last year, March of 10, or March of 10. We were fortunate that we took advantage of the FAB legislation that enabled us to get some extremely low interest rates through the ARAD dollars. Borrowed money to 297, I believe that's right. Today, we were borrowing money, it's still cheap, some of the lowest cost of money out, you know, around 335 for a 20-year deal. So the cost of borrowing is very, very, very cheap. And the last bullet, the city is rated double A minus. That's huge, okay? That is great. You drop to an A plus, it'll cost you money when you enter the debt markets. I mean, it could cost, depending on where you are on the yield curve, 25 to 40 basis We'll hit the next page just, just very, very briefly. This is just a snapshot of history of your income statement, and really, the main thing that I want to point down there, point on this spreadsheet, and it's a positive, is your debt coverage ratio. And if you go under, you know, column 2011, and go to the very bottom, you'll see a, what's called a debt service coverage ratio of 2.69 times. What that means is, is you basically take your revenues minus your expenses, and you come to a net operating dollars available to pay debt service, and then you divide that by your debt service. You can cover debt service by 2.6 times. That's very good. We're going to talk on the, a couple of pages down, that, that meets some of the highest categories from S and P, and actually from Moody's. So that, that's something to be proud of, I mean, it's something we want to manage and try to maintain as a strong debt coverage ratio. If you flip to the next page, and wait just 20 seconds on this page, it's just a snapshot of your sewer balance sheet. You know, we have been preserving cash. There's a reason we've been preserving cash, is you've got $80 million projects coming down the pipe, and some of that money along with bond issues will need to be deployed to pay, you know, to take care of the capital plan. Next page, I apologize, I should have had a note. This is just a real quick snapshot. You know, you all have a lot of debt. We've got two bond debt, bond issues outstanding for the sewer. One we did, completed in '07 for just under $10 million, and the other I referenced in 2010 was 13, 13.4 million. We, you know, and I've got a note here beside it, the '07 transaction sold at about 391, the 2010 was about 287. I mean, we hit the market really, really well in both of those transactions. This does not include your K and A debt service, but that, that's out there, too, in a small, small number. If you flip to the next page, I just, I just want to make a couple of points. I'm on the rating agency discussion. You know, in '08, my world changed. I mean, the financial institutions, a lot of banks got crushed, a lot of municipalities, we had first, you know, one of our first major bank agencies, a municipality in, down in Alabama, I'm sure everybody read about that, but, you know, the banks, the municipalities, corporate issues going through tough times. What happened? The rating agencies all got really, really, really conservative, almost like a knee-jerk reaction. You know, they went from one day being really easy to work with, the next day very challenging to work with. You know, there was all kinds of downgrades throughout the country. I direct you to the second bullet. City currently has standard four's rating, double A minus, upgraded, upgraded March 2, 2010. Doing things right, okay? We're, you know, you're doing things right. Below the sub-bullet, triple B minus is the lowest, triple A plus is the highest, double A minus is very good. Stay, stay in the double A category, and, you know, things will be really good. What's the rating reflect? We've got a stable customer base, and we've got a lot of retail, retail users of our sewer. You've got the legal authority and wherewithal, wherewithal's a key term, to raise rates if you need to, okay? That, that's important. Solid debt coverage ratio, I mentioned that on the income statements, we're 260. Your, your legal requirements are 120, okay? Your, your, your bond ordinance will require 120, so we're, we're good. I mean, things are very, very good there. Strong cash balances, and we've got a lot of cash, but it's, it's got a place to go. It's going to fund capital projects. You know, our, the rating agencies won't tell you exactly how much you should hold. It's kind of a guessing game with, with them to a degree. What we've, what we've talked about internally is trying to hold reserves long-term equal to one year's expenses, and really north of that, okay? Probably in the, you know, the eight to 10 million range. This is, you know, we'll talk about the, the cashier in a minute. Favorable economic conditions, and we're, you know, we're, we're here in a nice residential, retail-oriented community. We've not got beat up like some of the bigger communities. Strong management, sound operations, I mean, that, things are going pretty well. If you flip to the next page, just some real quick points, our per capita income levels, and this is not even new data control, but we're, we're in some of the highest categories, believe it or not, and, you know, compared to national average with, in standard four's use, and so we're good. Debt coverage, I've mentioned it three times now, a 270. This exceeds the highest category of strong, that, that, greater than 150 by S and P, so we're in good shape there. Liquidity, we got a lot of liquidity right now because we, we reserve cash for projects, but again, you know, I, I think the plan's try to hold one year, get at least one year, if we can get it to a year and a, year and a half, wonderful. Debt access, we don't have a lot of debt, we're in, you know, we're in the highest category, federal category. And then customers as a percentage of total operating revenue. This is another metric that S and P looks at. They don't want to, they want to make sure, or they'll deign us, if you will, if we have too much revenues coming in from one particular source. We don't. Bottom bullet, the metrics are good, I mean, the things are good. If we flip to the next page, and now we're going to talk about numbers here. As I mentioned, cost of inflation increases every year, that's a good thing. In '07, there was rate increases scheduled for, for '08, '10, and '12. If you go to scenario one, I'll just walk through these pretty quickly, and I'm on the page that's, I'll work here. If you go to schedule one, what this, what this schedule assumes is, we go ahead and we implement the 15% rate increase, and that's kind of about the third row down. We implement the 15% rate increase, but we only spend cash. That means all our, all our dollars are going out immediately. If we have an $8 million project, boom, it's gone, as opposed to bonding, $8 million at a, you know, low cost of borrowing. So this scenario assumes all cash deployment, and as you'll notice, kind of in the, kind of in the middle, it says balances of 630, 11, there's about 26 million that, that it can be used for capital projects. Well, if you use all cash over a 10-year period, you're actually going to go negative even with your, even with your rate increase. And we analyzed this two years ago, we analyzed it four years ago, that, that hadn't changed. We, we've done that, and, you know, the direction and the recommendation is not going to be the deployment of all cash. That, that's not the prudent approach. If you go to scenario two, and we'll talk about two and three together, two and three, well, I mean, Frankfurt's always been pretty conservative about the, about the tenor, the final term on the bond issue, generally go out about 15 years. That's being conservative, that's, that's good, you're getting low, you know, rates on the low end of the yield curve. Well, the yield curve is very flat. You can go out longer, you can, you can go out 20 and 25 years and still achieve a very low rate. So scenario two and three are actually 16 and a half year terms, okay? Say, why in the world are you doing 16 and a half year terms? We're doing a year and a half of interest only to construct, proposing a year and a half of interest only to construct your project, and then a 15-year amortization of bonds. If you follow down scenario two, this scenario is, again, assumes a 15% rate increase January 1 of, of 12. You'll see that beginning balance, that's the same all went across, the minimum was 12 million, the, the balance at 10 years, that's the most important thing, that's 13, 13 million nine. You know, at the 13 million nine, with the inflation that we've built into your, to your revenues and your expenditures, we've, we've really already got, you know, quite a bit of cash if you implemented that rate increase in January. That, that increases quite a bit in the next 10 years. I mean, you'll accumulate a lot of cash, you'll, you'll accumulate too much cash, actually. If you go down to the bottom part of scenario two, what I, what I did, and there's, we've got a lot of backup spreadsheets on here, but just too, too big to share. That, this column here, and I'll point to it. Scenario two, it assumes an $8 million cash outlet, let's spend some of your cash right now, you're not earning a lot on it just because of the environment we're in, go ahead and spend your cash for your capital projects. You'll notice a $16 million figure below that. The way this analysis works, or is, is assuming that we'll implement a bond issue, you know, on or about December 1 of 12, it could go into 13, but our, our analysis shows that we're needing about $8 million a year, okay, to keep up with, with your capital projects. The reason that we're, we're saying spend your money, your cash now as opposed to bonding, again, is your, your return is very, very low. I mean, everybody's seen what their checkbook return is, there's nothing there. We want, however, we want to, we suggest that you implement a bond issue before rates start creeping back up. You know, the, the economists are suggesting that the rates will be held down probably through June of '13. I mean, that's something we're just going to monitor and watch, but the recommendation, we'll hit the recommendations here in a minute further, would be to implement a bond issue late December, or late 2012 or sometime '13. If you go to scenario three, it's the same turn, but you'll notice, here's the big shift. Instead of the bond issue, or instead of the rate increase in 2012, we've spread the rate increase out in '14 and '16, seven and a half and seven and a half. If you follow down to your cash positions, your cash positions are still pretty good. I mean, they're still okay, nothing to, nothing to be ashamed of there. Same, it's the same deployment of cash and bonds on scenarios two, three, four, and five at the bottom. Again, we're, we're structuring in cash followed by bond issue. Again, we're, we're structuring in cash followed by a bond issue, then some more cash and cash and bond issue. The one thing I can tell you, this plan will change. If, if we go through and determine cost and rates change, I mean, it's a managed process. I mean, it's something you got to keep your eye on the ball. But if you, in scenario three, your cash positions are still fine. If you go to scenario four, what the four is, the difference is, that, that turns into a 21 and a half year scenario, which is took, you know, as I mentioned, you can go out further on the yield curve and still get a low interest rate, okay? And we think that's going to hold true for, for some months to come. So if you look at scenario four, it's a 15% rate increase, January 1 of '12. If you slide down, you really start, at that point, you start accumulating too much cash. I mean, you, you, you don't need to do the rate increase at level of 12. If you go to scenario five, again, it's the 21 and a half year term and we've split the rate increase seven and a half, seven and a half. That gets you a pretty nice balance. What that does for you, it allows you to, you know, if, if we don't go to the rate increase January 1 of '12 and decide to, to